Welcome to the town council meeting for March 27, 2018. We're gonna open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment's silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a routine end of service.
Take a moment to have a moment of silence for reflect on our duties here and remember our first responders and our veterans home in a way. All right, thank you. In accordance with the Mass General laws, we're taping the meeting. Is anybody else taped in the meeting? Public comments, we have none. Council comments? Nope. Moving on.
Oh, the only council comment is, I don't know if it's part of yours, but we'll see. Paul initiated it and we have a connection over at where they call Black and Decker. And they would love to give us a tour of the place, but he just said what works for you. And I know Kathy has already gone numerous times in her previous capacity and Michael as well. But they're excited and so any time a business in town is excited about seeing us, they seem very genuine by the email, it's a really good thing. So I don't know what works with your schedule, guys, if you want to go. It's just, I'm sure it's a win-win for both the company and for us just to be able to see a successful growing business in town.
Can we throw a couple of dates?
Please.
Have you throw a couple of dates out and then we can, that's easier for me is if you say-
What time, morning, afternoon?
Depends on when, not for the next two weeks.
Okay. All right, after tax day. So let's try, I mean, are Wednesdays good?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Or Wednesday, midday? Well, your schedule, I'd like to work around yours because-
It's more of like, just let me know when the date is and I'll try to accommodate.
Prefer before you go to work or on the tail end?
Morning would be better, probably.
All right, mornings work for you guys too?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll find out. Wednesday's, I'll try Wednesday morning after tax day.
Okay.
Okay, is that you as well?
That might work for me as well.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's far enough out, Don, I can adjust my schedule, so.
After tax day in the AM sometime, so nine, ten-ish. Yeah, ten-ish, anyone? Okay.
All right, now you're up Denise.
Okay. Well, nobody else had comments, but I do. But not a lot, because we just met last week, so I, my report is pretty short. It's actually been a very, very busy week, both with budgeting and negotiations, the union contracts, one is signed, fire department is signed, and the other three are still in the midst of negotiating in various stages. If at any point, and the councilman has already asked about the contracts, I can discuss them in executive session. Once they're signed, they're public information and anybody can get them and I can get you a copy if you want. Just let me know what you'd like to do with that. I have talked with the president of the council about some of the things that are being asked so that I do have a flavor of what the council would want. The other big agreements that I've been working on are, they have to do with Maple Street and Dwight, the whole big construction there, the medical. If you recall, last year, there were two agreements that needed to be put in place. One's an inter-municipal agreement with Long Meadow, because they're going to do the bonding for all of the roadwork and we're going to pay them back a portion each year of that bond, $20,000. That $20,000 will be coming from the healthcare owners that, and I have to put that agreement as well. I'm waiting for comments back on the one from the healthcare folks and the one, the inter-municipal one, I'm waiting for Stephen Crane to provide me with a copy so that we can start getting that all set. With those two agreements in place and we've got a lot of easements and those kinds of things, they've got to move poles and all that, so if you thought Maple Street was a mess last year, hang on, it's gonna be worse.
As long as you fill the potholes.
Well, they're trying, but it's, you know, it's like throwing money in a hole.
Literally.
Or owning a boat.
The final negotiations that I've been working on is, as I've been updating you all, has to do with the Hampton, the fire, police and I, along with IT, have been working with the Hampton folks to get something in place for, it's not really gonna be called a regional dispatch, I found after I started drafting, because I'm the one that's drafting the actual agreement that we're going to get into. It's gonna be a shared, because there's only two of us. So it's not as complicated as a regional dispatch, but there's a lot of stuff that needs to be covered in that. So that is coming together. We have a meeting later this week that we expect to get sort of the final, okay, what does everybody have on the table that they need to get done? Because it has to go to town meeting in Hampton, by May 14th is their town meeting, but that means if you count back from there, when they have to put the notice in the paper, so they have to have all the wording, so it gives us not a whole lot left of time. This has been a much more complex project, as you all are aware, going from six towns to then, I think we were in something for a little while that it was just three, and then it went up to the Chicopee one, which was five or six again, and now it's back down to two. That's what's taken a lot of the time this year, but I think this model of two is really the way to start. And after you get the two and you're successful at that, you can maybe offer to open it up to a third. So that's, it's exciting that we're almost there on that. That's really the only things I have, the balance of my time has been spent with the budget and capital plan and of course, the regular day-to-day business that just doesn't stop. There's a reminder here about the Lions. If you haven't responded yourselves, if you'd let Tom or I know so that we can make arrangements for you. Spouses are invited, which was unclear the first round of notices, but they are invited. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Not used to hearing it so quick. Approval minutes, so all entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes of March 27, 2018.
I have a question. You're comparing that before we approve them. If we go to page six, if you come down to the boldface where it says motion. The motion it suggested that I made and it was seconded by myself as well.
It's impressive.
Wow.
You're good.
Wearing two hats?
It would've been better if you had all six votes.
We can look at the change if we fail. Okay.
So, problem based on the, is it one change?
So moved.
No, we should let him move and second it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't want to take that away from him.
Go ahead, Monica. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. It's moved and seconded, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is, basically, I asked the committee members to try to come up with questions for a social media questionnaire that we could hopefully get on to the next, what do you call it, the department head meeting, so we can find out what their needs are and stuff. So I got a couple, still a work in progress, so nothing on that. It's a big matter of, I mean, just transition into the next one?
Sure. We'll go on to number two.
The next one is, one of the things we want to do, and I'll go to 2A, is confirmation of the subcommittee members. I think it's important to have that firmed up, which was a practice that was done in the past, that we should do it, and I'll probably end up doing it for social media and we'll probably also do it for licensing in the future as well. I think it's very clear for the public to know who the members are and I think it's because we have people coming in, our school committee members are observing, we have our acting town, you know, acting town, what do you call it, planner and so forth. So I'm gonna entertain or ask, I'll make a motion that we identify the members of the committee, which is right here, perfect, save me the trouble. Accept the confirmation of the planning matters, subcommittee members, non-pro-tunk or dating back to the original subcommittee acceptance back in 227-18, under the provisions of Mass General laws, chapter 258, and more specifically, the members being myself, Don Anderson, fellow counselor Mike Kane, fellow counselor Tom O'Connor, former planning board member and former member of the Board of Selectment Marilyn Richards, and former member of the planning board and former member of the charter commission Ralph Page. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Next one is, basically, in deference to the fact that we are gonna have a new town planner, Bev Browder, and she starts on the 10th?
Connie.
Oh, Connie. Connie, I apologize. Connie, no relation to Bev. Maybe she is related, but anyway, she starts on the 9th. So Connie starts on the 9th and having the matter, and we also spoke with the petitioner and they have no problem. So we're gonna give her a little time and so we are meeting, where we continue to the 24th. So we're gonna have a subcommittee meeting that morning on the 24th at 9 o'clock in the library and give her a chance to chime in. Couple of things we talked about at the last meeting is the position of the subcommittee, as far as their recommendation, is that the project be under special permit. And at first, it was thought to be a deal breaker by the petitioner and the petitioner, John, said it was not and that they can work with that. So that's pretty much about it, so that's my report.
Thank you, sir. License matters, so we have the, first one is modifications to sections 1 and 4 of the regulations governing the club liquor license for Dunton Rally Post 293. Which is a change. be restricted to members of Dunton Rally Post 293, their spouses, guests of members, members of its women's auxiliary, members of the Sons of the American Legion and associate members. And 4, which is the following, are authorized hours of operation currently, Saturdays and Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And weekdays, should be noon to 1:00 a.m.
If the applicant's present, please.
Oh, you can come up, we had the documents, I was just going over it, but go ahead.
Thank you. Roger, I'm a finance officer with Dunton Rally Post 293. As you probably indicated, we were here in January and at that time you approved a portion of the modification we requested specifically related to the license premises. At that time, there was a question about one of the other items that we had requested. And following up on discussions with the town attorney and the state Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, we don't need to modify section number 2. But we are requesting, as you began to say, to modify section number 1. Right now, it lists, it says, sale of alcoholic beverages should be restricted to members of Dunton Rally Post 293, their wives, members of their women's auxiliary and associate members. We would like to suggest that we change wives to spouses, that's one suggestion. We would also like to add guests of members, clarify that guests of members can be served. And also to add members of the Sons of the American Legion, that is another associate organization of the National American Legion, similar to the U auxiliary. So we're asking for those three minor modifications to section number 1. The other section is the hours, the authorized hours of operation. Right now, it says Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And it says weekdays, 2:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And we would like to clarify, well, we would like to change the Sunday hours to 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. to reflect your latest regulations as far as the cutoff hour at the end. So it would be Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. And then, we would like to add to weekdays and Saturdays. In discussing with the town attorney, he said that often weekdays is meant to include Saturdays, but I noticed that some of the other licenses specifically list Saturdays. So we would like to specifically, and the hours for that would be, we're requesting noon to 1:00 a.m. So that would be weekdays and Saturdays, noon to 1:00 a.m. So that's, those are the requests that were asked before now. I would note that section number 2 refers to Board of Selectment, and I'm assuming you may want to modify that to make it same.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Saturday is here.
All right, so I can-
So you just said Sundays.
Entertain a motion to approve the modifications of section 1 and 4 of regulations governing a club liquor license for Dunton Rally Post 293, American Legion Incorporated. Moved in second, in further discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business run, close charter amendments. Tom, we're good with the charter amendments, right? Go ahead.
There's a sheet in your packet, you know, I did a, came back from the council and the only other change that-
You mean attorney, counsel?
The town council, the CIL council.
Oh, yeah, as opposed to SEL.
Right, exactly.
These guys.
These guys, yeah. That they, the only other change, other than change number 1 and 2 I went over last week, was a change to add the clerk, clerk of the council under Article 3, Town Manager, Section 2, powers and duties to include with the enhancements, with the other three department heads. And I talked to Kevin and got his concurrence on that and he said included another of that.
Kind of give a little history on that, just because the clerk of the council works for the council, you don't want the Ds just to follow.
I just saw, I just saw my name, my title added here and I thought, you guys are giving me more work.
Yes. The three positions originally said were the five chief, police chief and DPW for approval, basically, for hiring. So that came, actually, Tom O'Connor, give him credit, he's got the flu, but he brought it up and said, you know, the clerk of the council works for the council, so before any action can be taken there, we should have-
Fair enough.
-the decision. So that was one of the small changes.
And that was other than the other two? So I think the three changes we're gonna go forward with, I think they're all-
The only thing that hit me was on the first one about electing president, vice president, and that kind of actually what hit me was thinking of today, you know, you're silly for being in today, I hope you feel better. But we also have Tom out, but let's, we're looking at, when does it kick in in July? And in July, let's say we have the perfect storm that doesn't, you know, that we have the, you know, three president and vice president running for reelection and you have a weird situation where they both get defeated. And then we have the next in July where we have vacations and we also could have people been getting sick, and that's the sickness made me think about this. So now we don't have a president or vice president because they both, in this theory, lost. And now we, and we don't have a quorum with the new people because somebody's on vacation in July and somebody's out. Should we then have a fallback position of having, in that position, who would be acting president of the council? The most senior member? The most, I mean, what do we have as a fallback in case we do have that? I mean, you know, when we have two people running at a time in one year, three, and unless we take precautions to making sure that the president and vice president aren't on the same term, we could have the possibility of no president and vice president. And so we have the meeting, they're gone, who runs that meeting? And then we also have a situation where somebody's on vacation, so we can't elect a point of somebody, somebody's sick, should we have, like, if this continues past a month, then a super majority can make the decisions? Or not? I'm just throwing it out there, thinking of what we're up to today. I mean, it's not likely, but it could happen. And we're changing the charter. But annually, on June 30th, we don't have a president and vice president, whether they get defeated or get elected, every year you have to vote a new one in. So we're in that position to begin with, so there is no having, you know, so it doesn't matter who gets defeated. But also, if we have a super majority, then everybody's here. So you'd be able to elect somebody. So you can't, you know, I mean, it doesn't sound like-
If you put super majority and you got enough people that will vote anyway.
This seemed to suggest, I guess maybe I'm overreading it, was that you have to have everybody present to vote.
If you look at what we did last year, it was, we put it off because it specifically says you do it the first meeting in July.
Right.
Which, and then we didn't have people here.
So we did it before and this was a mistake.
Which was a mistake.
Right.
That called our attention, because we knew that people weren't gonna be on vacation. So to prevent that from happening, now we're saying at the first meeting on or after July 1st, where we have a full council.
Okay, but what if-
So the people will serve until then.
What if we don't have a full council for a number of meetings? Sickness and vacation, July and August are popular vacation time, we even talked about. Well, if you have enough people for a meeting, I would think you could just have someone to run the meeting. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a president, but you can just have someone who's here run the meeting. So they would have the authority, like in certain things, the president of the council has the authority to sign.
Well, I think in a case like that, if we knew there were things there that require a signature of a duly-elected member, we would table it till the next meeting. We would only conduct business that-
What I was gonna suggest is that we create the position, in this case, of acting president, acting vice president, until we have a full council. So that if there's matters that require the attention of that position, the acting position does, and we can put down, is not gonna receive the salary compensation for that period, it's just acting, just so that the business that matters that require-
You can do that by lowering the council at a time.
Well, isn't that the vice president then?
I'm assuming both got defeated, in this hypothetical. But see, at June 30th, there is no president and vice president anymore. They'll get reelected.
Sort of in a state of-
So the first meeting in July, yeah, it's only a one-year term.
As a board, if you're here, you can make somebody-
That's what I'm saying, we could just, you know.
Let's say there's four people here, you can appoint somebody amongst yourselves.
So that's consistent with the charter, so that if you, like, you know, setting up the agenda for the next meeting, doing things like that, the appointee can do that and that's consistent with the charter. That's where I'm going, is just that if we have vacations in July, August, and that we could be going two, three months without a president or a vice president in this scenario, if both happen to be running on the same term and both lose. And I'm just trying to, you know, if it's a charter matter, I figured it's smart to have a fallback somehow.
You know, I think that simple is better for me. I mean, I'm okay with this. If we have to, we've all been accommodating, as long as we give enough time and notice, like, if we had to schedule an off-cycle-
Special meeting, right.
-special meeting to come in here to essentially do that specific duty and, you know, as long as we have enough time to advertise for the meeting, I would do it. I'm sure you guys would all do it. We've had, we've done a couple before. I don't think that's the end of the world and, like, you know, to Paul's point, we did exactly that last year. I mean, really, you know, we carried it over and we essentially kind of ran it the same way.
Right.
But, you know, because we had to wait to, essentially to ratify it, I'm okay with this.
All right, so all entertain a motion to approve the proposed charter amendments as read and were forwarded, set amendments to the Attorney General's office for approval and subsequent ballot vote for the June 5th local election. Someone?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Do we have to do a roll call or something like this, or no?
No, it's not a roll call.
You don't have to?
No, because it's going on ballot. We're not saying it's ballot.
New business, financial match, financial update?
I'll have a very brief one, since I haven't been around a lot. Blacking again.
Make it at least four minutes long.
Oh, at least four, oh, it can last four minutes.
Talk slowly.
Actually, the first, the first question I have is that we're getting close to having everything together so that we would be presenting the budget to the council. Now, last year, I presented the budget to the council. I don't give it to you all ahead of time because it takes some explaining prior to. So I presented the night, it was the night of the first council meeting and even though it says it's due May 1st, unless you all want to have a special meeting, and I don't think I can be ready for a special meeting prior to the council's meeting of, I think it's the 8th?
Yeah, the 1st.
In May. So it's a week later. Which then brings to mind that the wording that you all have at some of the, some of the charter things say instead of May 1st or April 1st, it's at the first council meeting on or after July 1st. Maybe not for this round, because I think we're too far down the road with those changes, but it might be something to consider, because-
It's more flexible.
It will never happen on May 1st that the council will have, it would have to be a special meeting number one. And the first two years are weekend days, so it's not something that we're gonna do. So that might be something to consider next time around for that. So is a similar scenario as we did last year where Sarah and I will present the budget to you all in detail that night, is that acceptable to everybody?
On May 8th.
On May 8th.
I'm good. And since that's a major piece of our existence and why we do business-
That's my next, yeah.
Could we keep the-
Agenda.
-agenda as light as possible?
Yeah, unless there's really-
Well, if there's urgent matters, certainly.
More like license, you know.
Right, not to hold up a license or any other action that is time-sensitive, but keep that as light as possible.
The other thing I'd like y'all to consider is having a special budget meeting after that, because then, it's April 1st that I have to get it to you, so it would be the first meeting in April. The first meeting in May is the final budget, where you all have had to have input into that. And that only leaves one meeting, which, whether it's May 1st or April 1st or April 8th, it's still just one second meeting of the council. That's not very long for you all to think about it and, I'm sorry?
Did you mean that the next meeting is April 8th?
April, yeah.
April 8th, okay.
I meant April.
All right, so that's, or not-
April 10th.
April 10th.
Is it 10th?
April 10th, the next council.
Okay, so April 10th will be the budget, is budget night?
Presentation, yeah.
Okay.
But you-
We should go between April 10th and the first meeting.
You all should think about having another meeting that is just dedicated just to the budget.
The 24th.
Well, on the 24th, we already have, that's the continuation of the big project above, so we already have that in the pipeline already.
And in order to be able to answer any questions, you may have some specific questions of, for instance, the public works superintendent or the police or fire, that they would be here that, at that meeting and be able to answer any questions you have in detail rather than Sarah or I representing them. That's really not that effective and not fair to the departments that, there are plenty of them that will be very simple and you probably will have none, but there are a few that are pretty complex, that you will have questions, I'm sure.
So what do we already have for public meetings? I know, was there two that we put off till then or is it just the one?
There's two, but it's the same project.
Yeah, the same project.
Same project, so maybe we can do that one much earlier, like 6:15, 6:30, and then save the rest of the time for the-
I think maybe last year you started a budget meeting at like 5.
Oh, we started early. Didn't we start at 5? Yes, that's what we did. We bumped our starting time back.
As long as we're then done by the public, the time of the public hearing, because then, you know, we got to-
That would be the 10th, that would be the second meeting.
The 24th.
April 10th meeting is-
Oh, we're planning for now.
April 10th meeting, they're gonna present, so the 24th we're gonna-
24th is gonna be when we're gonna go over and make changes.
Go over it. So if we want to do a 5 o'clock meeting on the 24th instead of 6 or whatever.
Well, that's a good idea.
So what time is that public meeting except for, was it 6:30?
6:30 times the other meeting.
Okay, I'm fine starting at-
6:30, 5.
5 o'clock.
So we'll do that, we'll start at 5 on the 24th. So we'll do that, we'll start at 5 on the 24th.
Bringing food?
April 24th. Also, after, I've recommended to you all a capital plan. However, after meeting again with IT, with Public Works, I fine-tuned it, and I'm going to send you all tomorrow a revised recommendation.
On your plan, does it have, so like, if we look at this 16, 17 capital plan?
Right.
There were projects obviously listed out. Do we have what was done?
Not in the format that I have now, but I can do that.
Yeah, just so I know what came up, we wanted to know, because obviously-
Compared to, right.
You know, sort of fluid, if something falls off, stuff goes on in the end year, so we can look at what we had on the list, what's completed, and then obviously you're going to reprioritize as things come off, but-
Right. I can do that. I also added a column at the end that had, gives a note as to why the project is needed, because that seemed to be a bit of frustration as well, that, you know, I'm recommending them, but you don't know why. This should give you the reasoning behind that. I've killed the four minutes.
And then some.
I think that's really all I-
Also on that spreadsheet to Kevin's remark about putting on the, a column that shows the projects that have been completed, if you have the data readily available, to put the actual bottom-line cost of those finished projects.
Some of them I know aren't complete-
Right, right.
Because they're, for instance, a spring project or something, but I will, yeah. Okay, that's really all I have.
Okay.
I want to hear out the natural questions for me.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise. All right, now we're on to our public hearings. First public hearing, public hearing for wine and malt beverages premises liquor license for Trey Olive. It's a petitioner here.
Oh.
Oh, come on guys.
Got to grab a chair.
Yeah, just give them. There you go.
All right, the reason for this public hearing is to discuss an application for wine and malt beverages off premises liquor license for Trey Olive. Council members are Federici, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. I'm going to open the public meeting and have the clerk read the notice into the record. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws that Trey Olive LLC, DBA Trey Olive 180, Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a wines and malt beverages off premises liquor license. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, March 27th, 2018, at 6:30 PM, in the Council on Agent Meeting Room 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council. Thanks, Tom. The meeting is being recorded, so everybody, I need everybody who speaks, speak clearly and identify yourselves. At this point, we're going to have the applicants present and discuss the application. Come on, guys.
Sure. So Mike Maruka, co-owner of Trey Olive. So we applied for the license, to basically have the ability to sell wine and beer with our gift baskets, which were filled with different products.
That's it, right?
That's it.
All right. I'm going to open it for public input. Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, so we can discuss among the council. Guys, you got anything?
No, no, I'm good. Are you free advertising for you? What's your, you have a background in beer and wine, or any type of niche that you're going after, or?
So our business is based, we own olive oil company. We bring all of our olive oil directly from our grandfather's farm in southern Italy, in Calabria. And we have, we offer different gift baskets, and we wanted to bring some additional variety to our customers, and, you know, fine foods and good wines and beers are a good match. So that's, that's really what we're trying to do.
But if someone like myself wanted to come in and have a, buy a bottle of wine, would you be, you wouldn't turn me down, right? You'd still be selling, or do you have to buy the gift baggage to get the wine?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think the license would cover both options, right? So we would carry, we have a pretty small retail location, so our offerings might be limited at this point, but that could be, you know, a different option as well.
Okay. From your own business, so, you know, from your own marketing plan, is that one of your goals, is only to sell it that way, or offer that as an option?
Well, we saw it just as a-
You have to identify your-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joe Maruka, I'm co-owner of Trey Olive as well, with my brother. We just saw it as a great coupling option, as far as our gift boxes and our, and our baskets. I mean, you know, if someone came in and wanted to buy, you know, a bottle of wine, I don't see that being a problem, I don't think. But, you know, I think it'd be more as a gift option than anything else.
Sounds good.
I was just going to ask you guys, how long have you been operating?
We have had the retail store for a little over three years now.
At the same location?
At the same location.
Uh-huh. Did you operate one prior to that?
We had, we have an online business that we've been operating for quite some time, probably about seven or eight years, but we haven't had-
Are you guys local guys?
We are, yeah. Yeah, we grew, both grew up in East Long Meadow.
And just for the record, where do you live?
I live on 11 Overlook, I drive in East Long Meadow. And I live at 24 Stone Hill, in East Long Meadow.
Well, good luck, it sounds like, um-
It's interesting place.
Yeah, interesting.
Thank you.
And you're on Shaker Road, right?
We are, we are right in front of Country Class.
All right, and being said, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the new wine and malt beverages off premises liquor license for Trey Olive.
That's all.
So you're second?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations guys.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You want to take a five minute recess?
Sure.
Sure.
The last thing we have to do is to-
We can do that.
The format for the documents.
All right, so I'm going to take three.
So I'll entertain a motion to take 10, executive session out of order, and we're not going to do executive session, because it's just discussing the performance review form for the town manager, but before our next public hearing.
Someone?
Second. Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
So let's do item 10. Should be a copy of the motion.
I don't think I saw one.
I don't think there is.
I emailed it out.
Yeah, I got it.
I've seen it.
I got one, the printer went a little psycho, but there it is. That's fine.
It's all right, we all have it.
Oh, you are second.
So I just, at this point, I guess we, there's comments on it, I know part of this was, it was a PDF document, converting over to Word, already talked to Jeannie, there's some cosmetic stuff in there that has to be changed, but other than that, when I looked at it, I thought with the categories that are included on there, the rating gives everybody a fair chance to put individual input in, without really, you know, kind of arguing about it, you have your own to do. Each council member will have their own evaluation to do. The categories obviously rated 1 through 5, then divided by 5 as an average. The last few pages allow us to have written comments about performance, strengths and weaknesses, or areas of improvement, I don't know if weakness is really the right one. And then there's also one for, with the critical areas of improvement, there's a section for priorities, goals, and expectations for the following year, which, given the fact that we didn't really, I mean, we verbally gave priorities and expectations last year, but we didn't really get around to formalizing that in any sort of way. I think we were just overwhelmed at the beginning of the year, and so, looking at it, I went through it kind of, compared it to a bunch of others on, out there, and thought this was a pretty good document. Like I said, there's some cosmetic changes in wording and stuff like that, that we, you know, addressed, that Jeannie and I are going to have to look at, if there's anything you guys see that you want to add.
No, just basically, I think if there was, you know, again, confidentially, just a contractor, if within it, it had like what you, your expectations and goals, or anything that we can use as a comparison, and what you thought.
No, there is not.
Basically, I'll tell you that, what we did with the expectation and goals for last year were every change mandated to be implemented by the charter.
Okay.
So the separation of the clerk and treasurer's office out with the director of finance and hiring the human resources personnel, establishing those departments, some of the other things that, you know, we, obviously the budget piece, the dates, date timelines for the budget and those sort of things, that was really what we held the expectation was, was understood that that's what it was.
Right, it was mutually understood that whatever the charter, the language in the charter called for changes or implementations, that the town manager would use that as the framework for the goals for this year, that fiscal year that we're in.
So we just basically, when we actually have the performance evaluation, we already have this filled out, and use it just for, or do we fill it out based on after, and then get, let's say afterwards, where you said, oh yeah, that's right, and change, change our recommendation after talking or something?
Well, it's something, I mean, it sounds like we should all fill it out.
Fill it out.
Take a blended average of the scores.
Right.
You know, so take them all, you know, add them up and divide them.
Basically, what I'd like to see is, the final document would be some produced by the council after we talk about it.
As a collective of the-
As a collective of everybody's. But this way, everybody has some time to think about it, an opportunity to weigh in on whatever you think strength and weaknesses might be, so on and so forth, areas of improvement, things that she's done exceptionally well, whatever, and then we blend that document to one, but if we start with everybody having that say, then everybody's input's included in the final document, so that way it's not, to me, it seems fair.
That makes a lot of sense, and then as far as the goals, you know, you mean, first of all, best practice, we shouldn't be this late in the year, you know, we're definitely late, that's our fault.
Right.
So going forward, we should be a little tighter with, you know-
Timeline.
Yeah, timeline. And then, you know, as far as the goals, you know, they, they should be kind of living, breathing things, as we accomplish certain things throughout the year, so even just an informal check-in on a quarterly basis, you know, to see how we're doing, because we can help make adjustments, but we can't do that if we wait till the end of the year, do an annual review, and then realize that some milestones have been missed for various reasons, so I, you know, it doesn't have to be a formal, formal process, but, you know, I'm sure Denise wants to accomplish her goals.
It can be anecdotal at that point, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Question, procedural question, is how far can we schedule agenda items? Can we say, all right, I want this in the January meeting or something? I know we have everything in the charter, like voting and things of that nature, which we know, but let's say, so it stays out of sight, out of mind, we just already, we already, you know, put it in the pipeline as a, an item.
On or after.
Yeah, because we already know what our schedules are, you know, for the second Tuesday, and then two weeks later.
Don't we have a joint Gmail calendar? I don't know, I don't think we use it, but-
I don't know that you do, but it's a good idea.
We do have one, but I tend to use Outlook, but I do, I do have one.
Well, I mean, we all have on our computers, I don't know, we can, someone can talk to Brian and just ask if we can schedule certain things, because we just, we get derailed with so many other important things, but yet this is pretty critical.
But we can slot it for, say, maybe the second meeting in January, or if that's too early or too late, whatever, and that way it's already in, and so when you start working on the agendas for next year, it's already, oh yeah, that's right, it's in here already.
Well, I would think the clerk just keeps a running list of dates that we're meeting and jots things down, and builds, those agendas kind of build themselves.
Exactly, right. So you can go as far as you like.
Right.
Excellent.
All right, so that's, so-
So as far as the document itself, I mean, it's as good as any, I don't really have a problem, it's how we execute the document, that's in the goals that we set going forward, so I think it's fine, I don't really, other than a couple, like you said, aesthetics things, I'm good with it.
Okay.
So when should we be prepared?
What's our deadline?
Yeah.
Well, Jeannie and I are going to work on it, to fix some of the stuff with the-
Cosmetics.
My cosmetic stuff, then I'll send it out, and hopefully, hopefully have it out, maybe Friday.
So do you want it for next?
So if we can get it for the next council, maybe.
And then, just as a kind of point of protocol, if someone, for example, is sick or missing that day, do they still send theirs in?
They forward it to them.
Okay.
Because it's going to be, we switched it from a PDF to a Word, which is hopefully why we're going to switch some of the stuff on it, and actually be able to type right on it, and then you can just forward it as an email, so we have it.
Okay.
And then we'll have it, obviously, you know, we don't have to write it out.
As an FYI, our next council meeting is budget night. And I thought we wanted to keep it really light.
If we're doing it in executive at the end, it's not-
Well, we can't do it in executive.
I thought the, I thought the actual evaluation is in executive.
No, unless it's a personal, character traits and stuff, I was talking to one of-
Jim.
I have the language from the charter right here.
Yeah, if you could enlighten us.
There's Jim. Jim here?
Yeah.
He's in the corner.
It says, "We're a public body, we're a public body is discussing an employee's evaluation considering applicants for a position, or discussing the qualifications of any individual. These discussions should be held in open session to the extent that the discussion deals with issues other than the reputation, character, health, or any complaints or charges against the individual."
Easy enough.
Tough job to have, man. It'd be evaluated in front of everybody.
You shine nothing for it.
Yeah, I did.
More than once, maybe, I remind you.
Are you sure, are you sure you don't want to add another amendment to the charter before that date expires?
So that's it, right? We're good with the thing? We'll get it for next meeting, and we'll put it on the agenda at some point in that spot before the presentation. Maybe after, maybe we wait till after.
Yeah, we do.
The sound of presentation goes.
That's right, yeah.
No pressure.
Budget doesn't go well.
Hold on.
I'll make a motion, I guess, to return to our regular order for the item 9B.
Second. So it's moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll go to 9B. This is a continuation of the public hearing. The reason for the continuation of this public hearing is to discuss a change in category from wines and malt beverages off premises to alcohol beverages off premises. For the beer shop, again, council members are Federici, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. This is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public meeting and have the clerk read the record into the notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws that the beer shop LTD 33 Harkness Avenue, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a liquor license change of category from wines and malt beverages off premises to all alcoholic beverages off premises. The town council will hold a continuation of the public hearing on the application
on the application on Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, at six forty-five P M. In the council and agent meeting room three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thanks Tom. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. I need all persons who are speaking to identify and social clearly state their home address. At this time, we're going to have, the applicants are here. We had discussion on it, but if you have anything further that you want to add, certainly you kind of know what your plan is, but.
Richard Caddill, thirty-eight Callney Drive here in East Long Meadow. I just want to open up with a highlight of what we've been doing for the last five years. Our overall goal was always to have a high-end niche packaged store that embodies celebration with an emphasis on craft beer. We've furthered that with the selling of home brewing supplies, and now we'd like to sell all alcohol. Anyone that's been in our shop can tell that it's different from other liquor stores. It's well-lit. It just has a good vibe amongst it. It's not dingy and dull. We're a small business. In the last town meeting, I heard someone mention that East Long Meadow is one of the better places to open up a small business in Massachusetts, and we're a product of that, and we'd like to continue to grow. Over the last five years, we've donated to several charities from local, like the E L, E F, Autism Speaks, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I have Camden County, and various others. We're a part of this town, and we'd like to continue to grow and doing so, change of license to sell all alcohols.
Thanks. Was there any other public comment?
Randy White, forty-nine Harkness. I just want to reiterate that my wife and I are not here to impede Mr. Caddill's business in any way. We like and respect both of them. I think they have a great business as it stands right now. However, I feel that this town meeting gives us our one and only opportunity to proactively address our concerns, which were concerns back in two thousand and twelve when they initially had the application for the new business. If the council's decision is a binary decision, yes liquor, no liquor, we have to, we have to oppose that application because we have no other recourse. Our specific gripes are with single-serve liquor bottles, which will include nips, half pints, and pints. After fourteen some odd years of being a resident at forty-nine Harkness, we have plenty of experience and plenty of observations that this can only hasten the problems that we see now, which are people cutting across our property in the last eight months. My neighbor and I had one separate rut in each with alcoholic, or I shouldn't say intoxicated pedestrians. Fortunately, that didn't escalate to anything requiring law enforcement, but because my neighbors have two small children, once was enough for them. We don't have children. I was able to take care of the issue. So, but again, this is our one and only opportunity to address this proactively instead of reactively. Now I have to take my surveillance video and send it to the, if, if the application is approved, I now have to react by getting law enforcement involved, and that's just a big waste of time. Mr. Caddill mentioned the uniqueness of his business, and that's what makes it great now. Selling hard liquor makes it just another package store. I didn't have a spot, I'm not a cartographer, so I don't have a special map set up, but I actually looked at where package stores are located throughout the town. And at any point leaving in this town, if distance only is a factor of why you would go to one package store over the other, Mr. Caddill's business would take, I'm estimating again, probably about maybe seventeen or eighteen percent of the town. And I'll just give you an example. Leaving from this parking lot here, it's shorter to go to Lighthouse, or is it Lighthouse? It's shorter to go to Lighthouse than it is the beer store. So anything south of here, it is less distance to go to another package store. Take Kelly Fredette, for instance. If you left that point of East Long Meadow, it's closer to go to City Line. So that leaves this small northern swath of area where, again, by distance, it is shorter to go to Mr. Caddill's business versus any other. Now, notwithstanding his business, and I understand that he's been here for a number of years, and he has that uniqueness, which is a draw. And they're great people, I think. So it may be somebody on the infield line says, well, I'm going to pass the Tudor House. I'm going to pass Lighthouse, and I'm going to go to the beer store because I like breaking his wife. I like what they sell. I got to get some beerings, or some beer-making supplies. That's fantastic. But folks, this is hard alcohol. You could get that anywhere along the lines. I, I'm trying to make a proactive approach to not have the stuff that I can foresee that's going to happen to our neighborhood. Most of the time, people will say, as the saying goes, not my backyard. This is my backyard, literally. It's my side yard. It's my front yard. It's my entire property. Unfortunately, my neighbor, Mr. Burns, that you met last, last week, he wasn't able to attend. He's in the same position that I am. My other neighbors, I, they don't care because the garbage collects on my yard, I guess. Maybe that's why.
Comment to the chair, you good?
Yeah.
And no, I appreciate you taking the time to come and voice your concerns, and we listened to what you had to say, you know, last, last time. I mean, part of the dilemma is that you can't punish somebody for what might happen in the future. And although I agree with your point that I don't see the purpose of a high-end niche store selling those things, we can't issue a license and say you can't, you can sell a one liter, but you can't sell a nip. I don't believe that's within our purview to do that. So it is, we're looking at a very responsible business owner who's run a very good business and has no issues and is very good standing with the town. And I did, I know I stopped by there, Kathy, I know you did, Mike, I believe you did too. Yeah, and Don, you know, and stopped in towels for a bite, walked around the property. I think I got there the same day that they had a gentleman cleaning the lot. And it's tough, your proximity, I mean, that's going to be a problem, you know, for, for you. And I hope it doesn't become a worse problem. And if it does become a worse problem, then I think, you know, it's, some action's going to have to be taken. But I can't in good faith punish them as business owners for something that might happen in the future. And I really hope for your sake that it doesn't, it doesn't get worse, because it's not fair for you as a property owner. You bought a piece of commercial property and, you know, I think on a, on a side note, eventually what we do with our sidewalk plan should absolutely include that area is a critical area of pedestrians walking there where we have other parts of the town that are planned, you know, I don't know what the planning map looks like. I remember looking at it and I don't remember. I meant to ask you Denise. But that should absolutely be, be taken a look at. That's not going to stop trash, you know, potentially being on his lawn. But, you know, when I brought up the point last time where this has to be, you know, I would hope there'd be some, you know, kind of consideration for, you know, a business owner and residents having to live together. I still don't see the need in your, what you're trying to accomplish and what you do with your niche to, to sell those kind of products. But from my research, we, we can't, we can't issue a conditional license in that, in that manner. So I'm sure that's, you know, not necessarily what you want to hear. But, you know, I do appreciate you taking the time to, you know, to come talk to us about.
Hail Mary. Is there any, is there any basis to the unique symbiotic relationship that the Peppas and the beer store have with Peppa's BYOB policy and having hard liquor being sold right next door? So now.
I'm coming on that. We actually addressed the issue with that already. After we left this last meeting, we had put a hold on any BYOB facilities, allowing BYOB right now in the town. So to relieve that fear, at least we've addressed that issue.
Okay. Well, that, that was my general public safety concern, more so than a personal concern, so I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I have another comment.
Hold on. I just want to close it, Mike.
Pardon?
You want to close it?
Is there anyone else?
Anybody else wants to talk? So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mike?
I was just going to say that we still have a safety net here, depending on how this board rules. And that safety net is that we are the licensing authority. So if there were any violations or problems that materialized, if this license is granted tonight, that we can revoke that license as quick as we can hand it out. And I'd be just saying, you know, duplicating what Joe said, that I wouldn't want to see them penalized, the petitioner penalized, for, you know, actions that you're seeing at this point in time that aren't any cause of what they've created at this time. But we will be watching that if what this board votes tonight is.
Understood. And it's great to know that there are some recourse that we have. But again, quite frankly, we're fond of these people and their business. So if there was something, we wouldn't, I don't think our first action would be to approach the town. It would be to approach them. Because again, I think we can perhaps work this out before we start getting into something deeper. And again, I in no way want to impede them from growing their business. So again, if, if, it's nice to know that there is that recourse there, but I think we can be amicable enough to start the process, working it out individually, and then go from there.
And we're here for you. That's all we all, we all want to do. We're here.
I appreciate that.
All right, so now we can, anybody else? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor license change of category from wines and malt beverages off premises to all alcoholic beverages off premises for the beer shop.
So moved.
Second.
Just moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
And now we'll move to eleven. Eleven, and move to that area.
When we say an hour, we say an.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.